Hello, everyone, and welcome. My name is Sydney Reppe, and I'll be one of your co-hosts this evening. I've been a student at Joliet Junior College since fall 2021, pursuing a degree in secondary education in English. This spring, I'm graduating from JJC with an Associate of Arts, and in the fall, I'll be attending DePaul University. At JJC, I'm co-editor of the Blazer Suit Newspaper, and I'm involved in activities including the Board of Literate Organization, National Society of Leadership and Success, and Honors Program.
Welcome, everyone. My name is Jasmine Martinez, and I will be your other co-host this evening. I'm a student here, and I have been here at Joliet Junior College since the fall of 2021, pursuing my Associate's in Arts to transfer. I hope to graduate this upcoming fall, and I will be transferring to UIC the following semester. On campus, I am the President of Student Government, a student employee at the Veterans Resource Center, and an advocate for the importance of civic engagement and community. And on behalf of the Student Government Association, thank you all for joining us today.
We are excited to have five Joliet Junior College Board of Trustee candidates joining us today for this public forum. Before we formally welcome them, let's take a minute to provide an overview of why we're hosting this event. Here at JJC, student government is a group of individuals in charge of managing various events, such as activities, programs, and student collaborations. We also consider ourselves the voice of the student body and share your insight with the JJC administration. As students from the Blazer, our purpose is to provide relevant and objective information regarding events and topics important to the JJC community in an accessible format. We publish four times a semester and deliver in both paper and PDF formats. Today's event is important, as the April 4 election is essential, not just to us as students, but also to Joliet District 525 residents. The Board of Trustees represents the community's voice at JJC. They build a working relationship between the college and community partners. The job of the Board is to determine policies that are helpful or necessary for the college. It is the community's right to vote to elect new board members, who will work diligently to provide an opportunity for students to receive a high-quality education.
And with that, at this time, I would like to provide you all with the guidelines for today's event. The forum will be moderated by members of student government and the Blazer. Each candidate will be allowed three minutes to provide an introduction of themselves. Prior to the event, JJC student government and Blazer members have sent out an invitation to the candidates, and the five individuals joining us are those who accept them. We have provided current students with the opportunity to submit questions. Student government and Blazer members collected these questions, and we'll be reading them during the event. We believe the questions that we will be asking today broadly represent those submitted. So with that, please note the following guidelines for this event. All candidates will have three minutes to provide an introduction and reply to each question. No dialogue between candidates will be allowed following their responses. No distribution of election materials or campaigning in any way at this event; this includes handouts or electronic communication. Ten minutes before the end of the session, we will ask the candidates to provide closing remarks, and today's event will be recorded for future viewings. Again, thank you to our candidates for being here, and with that, let's get started.
Of the seven candidates who will be on the ballot, five will be joining us today. We will begin with the introduction of each candidate. It is our pleasure to invite you to provide a brief opening statement. Today's panel members include Crystal Garcia Centeno, Diane M. Harris, Kevin Collins Hedemark, Richard A. Davis, and Alicia Morales. We'll begin with Crystal.
Hi, everyone. My name is Crystal Garcia Centeno, and I use she/her pronouns. And I would say that community college completely changed the trajectory of my family's life. My grandparents were Mexican immigrants that worked incredibly hard in the factory and manufacturing industry to be able to send their children to college. And my mother was a first-generation college student, who graduated community college with a degree in nursing, who then went on to have a successful career as a nurse, which in turn uplifted our family from poverty and completely changed the trajectory of, you know, future generations within my family. So, as a product of a first-generation community college graduate, I followed in my mother's footsteps and became a proud JJC alumni, class of 2019, became the first woman in my family to obtain a bachelor's degree in political science in 2021. And I'm also the first woman in my family to go to graduate school, where I will earn a master's in business administration by the end of this year. So my education allowed me to dive into a career within the nonprofit sector, where I have worked at several advocacy organizations like Planned Parenthood of Illinois, Warehouse Workers for Justice, and the Sierra Club, a career that has given me the opportunity to get back to my community across intersectional social justice fights. So my family's story has taught me the value of higher education and the impact it can have on someone's life. However, I also understand that not everyone shares the same experience with higher education, and oftentimes, higher education can be catastrophic to one's financial, mental, and emotional well-being. So I am so excited to be here today to discuss how we can dismantle the institutional and systemic barriers that students face throughout their higher education journey, so that everyone, regardless of race, income, zip code, gender identity, or immigration status, have the support that they need to receive a high-quality education, and that they too can change the trajectory of future generations to come. So, so thank you so much for having me here today.
Thank you for your response. We'll hear from Diane next.
Hello. My name is Diane M. Harris, and I'm, as you know, a candidate for Joliet Junior College trustee. I'm a proud alumni as well, from the class of 1987. And I am too, also a first-generation college student. And I have three adult children, and two of them are college grads, and one of them just graduated from high school and is experiencing "the gap" here, as he calls it. So hopefully, we'll guide him in the direction to come to Joliet Junior College. But a little bit about me, I'm retired after 32 years of service at ComEd, and I'm currently a small-business owner of a boutique in downtown Joliet. It's called "It Is Amazing," for the last five years. Before I did all of that, I had a job right out of high school, and I didn't go to college. It was important to my family, but it was more important to me that I had landed a job. But coming to the Joliet Junior College 30 years after that helped me to understand the dedication and the meaning of higher education. So, and I'm really glad that I did that in 1987. And since then, I went on and got the bachelor's degree. I'm officially registered as a licensed insurance agent, but currently, I'm inactive as an agent, but I'm still a notary with public, and I enjoy serving the community. The small business was very near and dear to me. I am considered a politician, if you will. Some indicate that that may be a negative connotation, but it really isn't. It's seeking out and serving the public, making sure that your voices are heard and the constituents are hearing you. So if anytime you decide to be a politician, don't let it deter you from being called a politician, because if you're officially activating, I'm sorry, motivating individuals to support you, then you are politicking. So, and it's nothing wrong with it, it's just some of the individuals are the ones that make it negative. I also serve on the Board of Trustees for the Joliet Public Library, and I'm a member of the Joliet City Center Partnership, which is a downtown organization where we promote our businesses. I'm a member of the Joliet Chamber of Commerce in Industry, the African-American Chamber, and the, will, and many businesses and political and religious organizations. I don't want to get into all of that. I support the mission and goals of small business, and how the collaboration with college meets the needs of creating a safer and greater community. Thank you.
Thank you for your response. We'll now move on to Kevin.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Kevin Collins Hedemark. I retired last spring after 35 years in the music and radio business. And when I retired, I wanted to continue what I'd done for many years in the volunteer effort with, working with children. I was the president of my kid's PTO, elementary PTO, for 10 years. After retiring, I became a substitute teacher. I worked several days a week as a substitute teacher in elementary schools in Valley View School District. I've also coached soccer, youth soccer, and I've coached youth softball. And I've been involved in the community with the youth for many years. I've served on a lot of committees and boards. I was one of the original members of the old Joliet Prison Restoration Committee, was in that early on, and helping clean that up to be a great tourist attraction to the Joliet area. I want to continue my service with kids and my kids' education. I have a senior in high school, a sophomore, and an eighth grader, and my seniors looking at college, and I've been writing those checks every day already for the application fee and reserve the spot and all those fees that come along. And I'm sure we'll talk about that later tonight in the forum, about the cost of education and what a great jewel we have. As I go around to the elementary schools and substitute teach, and I even see the kids on the campus at Joliet Junior College or other colleges, and I look at them and I think, you know, is there something that's going to stop this child from going to college, whether it be access to it, affordability, or for whatever reason it is? And is that the next John C. Hobolt, who, Joliet Junior College alum? Is it the next Illinois Supreme Court Justice, Mary Kay O'Brien, who's a JJC alum? Is there something that's going to stop that child from being the great next, the next great contributor to our community and to the world? And I want to overcome those hurdles. I wish I could sit here and say that Joliet Junior College is broken, and I'm going to fix it. It's not broken. It's a fantastic college. We need to keep the direction it's going. There's been a lot of changes. We need to make sure we're going down that path for not just careers now, but for careers five and 10 years down the road, and continue down that path. It's a great institution, and I hope I can be a part of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you so much for your response. We'll now move on to Richard.
My name is Richard Davis. I've lived in Lockport for the last 49 years. I was a career and technical education teacher at Lockport High School and in East Aurora High School. At East Aurora, I was a teacher, assistant principal, department chairman, and for the district, I was a grant writer and career and technical education director and any other job they wanted to give me. I've got a, I've been a member and officer of Illinois Association for Career and Technical Education, Skills USA, and Technology Education Association of Illinois. I've coached swimming and diving at Lockport, Tinley Park, and Oak Forest. Last fall, I was taking a course at Joliet Junior College. I broke some things I needed to weld them back together, but I hadn't done much welding since 1990. But in order to take the course I wanted, I had to take some prerequisites, which is okay, I have plenty of time, I'm retired. The equipment we were using in our metallurgy course was the exact same equipment that I used in 1971 at my Northern Illinois University course. I asked the instructor, should there be new equipment? He says, yes, there is, but it's expensive. And I looked into it, and it's like $15,000, $20,000 for the equipment I was looking at. I know there's grants available for that. JJC has boundaries from Lamont, Bolingbrook, Naperville on the north, to past Odell on the south, from Piattone on the east, all the way past Morris on the west. There's five counties, Cook, Will, Kankakee, Grundy, and Livingston County that students attend Joliet Junior College. I have a BS, an MS, and what they called at the time a CAS, which is now a specialist degree from Northern Illinois University. I had doctoral studies at UIC in education administration. I grew up in a small town in central Illinois, and I ended up going to Northern Illinois University because my friends were going somewhere else. It was good. My first course at Joliet Junior College was in the fall of 1979. My ID number is 0003980. It was Introduction to Disco Dancing. I volunteer with the Scouts. I work at H&R Block in Lockport. I have time and dedication. I'm a big supporter of students, and I believe I have background experiences that could benefit the career areas at JJC and make them better and improve our student opportunities.
Thank you for your response. Now we'll move on to Alicia.
Yes, so, thank you, everybody, for being here. I'd like to say thank you to the student government for putting this on, and also thank my colleagues for, five out of the seven candidates are here, and there are two seats open, so I want y'all to think of those numbers, okay? So my name is Alicia Morales, and I currently serve on the Board of Trustees. I've been a volunteer on this board for eight years now, and I say volunteer because I have to ask you all to do your part and, you know, go to the polls so that we can volunteer, and we don't get paid at all to do this. Currently, I serve on the evaluation committee for the president, so we give the president their review as to if they're meeting goals or not meeting goals, if they exceeded, you know, the standard. It's a courageous conversation that, you know, we have, but somebody has to, you know, we talk about accountability, that's how you hold people accountable. You set goals and then measure how they, how they did. So I'm on that committee, and I'm also co-chairing the policy committee, which I believe they said that that's what this board does. We are a board to set policy. We don't tell the employees how to do their job. That's not our job. Our job is to, if there's an issue or concern, we address it to the president, and then the president, you know, it flows through the president. I've lived in Joliet since I was one year old, so this is my home. As many of my colleagues have mentioned, I am kind of like our first speaker's mom. I'm a first-generation college student. I started college at Joliet Junior College when I was 27 years old. I stepped foot in here in a class during the day with a bunch of 19-year-old, 18-year-old students, and that was so intimidating for me, because I had lost my job. My job had moved away to Bourbon A., and I decided to go back to school and get some skills, and also because my marriage was falling apart. Education breaks cycles, and it broke my cycle. Had I stayed in an abusive marriage, I don't know where I'd be today, but today, I'm a businesswoman. I own my own all-state agency. I run my business. I'm the first Latina elected to America's first community college, so I'm very grateful to be able to give back. As my colleague, Ms. Harris, mentioned, the proper term is politician, but I like to say I'm a public servant, just because the politician word gets such a negative connotation. I went to school here. I worked here through the workforce program. I went, they offered me a position here in the financial aid office. So I worked in helping students package their Pell and MAP grant, because guess what? If you don't know how to pay for college, you may not come to school. So it was a blessing for me to have that job, and I got it because I was volunteering on campus, and they noticed that I was pretty responsible. I was a seasoned student, because I was 27. So they offered me a job here, and I didn't realize how hard it was to get a job at this school. Now that I've left, I see it's really, if people call me, oh, anyhow. So with that, I just want to say thank you. I have two adult kids, three grandkids, and I love to volunteer and give back. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for sharing a little bit about yourself, and I think we are ready to get started with our questions today. Starting with question number one. What skills and expertise do you have that would be beneficial in your role as a JJC trustee? And can you share any of those experiences you have with community colleges? And for this question, we will be starting with Diane Harris.
Well, first of all, as I mentioned in my brief introduction, I am a store owner. I have a ladies boutique, and I manage, I used to have three employees plus myself. So I've been able to manage, and you know, if you're managing your own business, you're everything. You're, you're the administrator, all the way down to the janitor. So those are some of the things that I've been taking care of for the last five years. And before that, I've always been into the arts, and not only that, I am a notary. I enjoy customer service, enjoy getting along with people. But my main thing that I really enjoy is investigations. I did a lot of investigative work when I worked for ComEd in the underground department. So my, my skill with investigative services is really, really strong, so I will be watching my opponents, for sure. But managing is something that I would definitely like to share with the trustee board. I know that we oversee budgets, and I've done that as well. But I think the key is to, to know that everything has to be managed properly, and you get your best results when the team works together.
Okay, thank you. Our second, our question now moves on to Kevin Hedemark.
Thank you. You know, experience, I think some of the boards that I've served on in the past, they offer you that experience of fiscal responsibility, and it's a great, great, great responsibility to have, you know, a roughly $100 million budget that you're helping shape and form. And I would love to sit up here and say, you know, there's no way we're going to raise taxes, there's no way that we're going to raise tuition. But it's a six-year term. It would be the last choice, both of those, but you don't know what's going to happen three, four, or five years down, down the road. And being able to sit on boards and manage budgets and put budgets together and really oversee those budgets is something that I think, as a board member, is looking at that stuff, that you need to take it very, 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 very seriously. The other thing that I bring to it, and, you know, as board members, we're ambassadors for the college. We need to be out there in the community as cheerleaders for this college. And I have great networking that I've had throughout there, and we need to engage with our community leaders, not just in Joliet, but we have the other campuses as well, Morris and Frankfurt and Romeoville, and engaging with those communities as champions for this, for this college, to not only increase the student body, but also to increase the money that comes in, and the donations, and the scholarships, and the trusts, and get that money in here as well. So I bring a great networking, which can be a great advantage as well. And, you know, as Diane mentioned, teamwork. I'm here to work with the members. You may not agree on everything, but hopefully you can come together and make it, reach an agreement, because we see where fighting gets us in many of the national political figures and state figures. It doesn't get you anywhere. You need to come together as a team and do what's best for the students and the college. And as far as community college experience, I have not attended a community college. I do have a four-year bachelor's degree in mass communications. I've spent a lot of time here on the campus, going to various events and activities, and have many, many friends that are professors and students here. So I have been on this campus, specifically on the Romeoville one, quite a bit, but I don't, I've never attended community college or JJC.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll be moving on to Alicia, I'm sorry, Richard Davis.
Okay. Thank you. As I stated before, I've got a mass quantity of courses I've taken over the years. I think I'm at a master's in 137 hours or so, a few of them at Joliet Junior College. I've got a technical background. I'm fluent in HVAC, welding, auto mechanics, CAD, engineering, machining, and some of the other areas we have here. One of the things that I look at is what's benefiting our, our students and what's the future of our students? That's the direction I want to always go in. There's grants that's always available. We need to experiment and look at where those are at. Also, what's the career focus for our students? Are you there taking courses? Are you really looking forward to a career? And what direction can we provide that? That's the direction I like, you know, our, our school goes to, and it could, needs to continue on. We've got a great reputation. We need to continue that. I want to be part of the team to help that out.
All right, thank you very much. We'll be moving on to Alicia Morales.
Sure. So the question was, what skill do I have? I'd like to say that, because I, I am an alum, class of 2001, but I also worked here. And as I mentioned a little earlier, I worked in the Office of Financial Aid, where we have to package the process of FAFSA, package the Pell MAP, the Pell Grant, the MAP, the Monetary Award Program from the state, and also the loans. Understanding how that process works and how students don't understand how to fill it out. It's free, but a lot of people still struggle with that, and just understanding the process, I think, how we have to do standards of progress to make sure that the students are making advancements in their, you know, trajectory to complete a degree. Because if they're giving, if they're given a grant, and then they're, they're dropping their classes or they're failing, they are risking losing that grant money, and then they have to pay out of pocket. So, you know, being able to counsel students on the risk of, you know, making sure that you're passing with this year better, I think I bring a lot of experience to the college, not just as a first-generation returning adult, what that feels like for adults to come back, but also being a frontline employee, working in the front lines, understanding the struggles and the questions that students have coming in the door. And admissions and financial aid, those are the first two stops students make. They sign up for classes, and it's like, okay, how am I going to pay for this now? You know? So understanding the process and how the compliance part that the college has to be, has to, you know, complete. My, the other skill that I'd like to say I bring to the board is also, now that I'm a business owner, like Ms. Harris mentioned, we have to develop a business plan. You know, we manage our budget, our payroll, our schedules, knowing, you know, any marketing material that I have to create, I have to pay for that. So we watch the, the marketing budget of the college, you know? How are they spending, you know? What is the rate of return that we're getting? Are we, are we allocating the dollars accordingly? Because we don't want to raise tuition. That's the last thing. I know that this college, since I've been here, I think we've raised tuition, the board raised tuition twice, and I can tell you, each time, I was a no vote on raising tuition, because I think there's ways we can repurpose other projects or maybe, you know, hold off on a certain project instead of raising tuition. I just think, I don't think we need to put it back on the backs of students, to be quite honest with you. So those are the skills that I'd like to say that, you know, I bring, and being able to have the hard conversations and, you know, not, you know, necessarily, sometimes you have to agree to disagree with your other board members, and some board members are not as agreeable when doing that, but being able to still do that and be firm and agree that, hey, you know what, this is, I know that respectfully, even though some are not very respectful, but that's okay. We cannot overreact to how other people are behaving. We can just be respectful at all times, so it's still be a team player, you know? But I definitely question things with the president, ask, you know, what is this? Why are we spending this money? And we don't rubber stamp everything, but there's a time and a place to ask these questions. We're given an opportunity. We get the book a week in advance, review it, ask questions, so by the time you get to your board meeting, you, everything's been addressed. Unless something has to be brought up, we bring it up. So I think it's experience, business background, and understanding how to navigate through the financial aid and the admissions process.
Thank you. And then we'll finish this question with Crystal Centeno.
So my career in the nonprofit sector has given me a lot of relevant skills and expertise, but I'll highlight two that I want to talk about today. So as a nonprofit operations worker, I've dealt with multimillion-dollar budgets, and I've had to allocate those things, have strategic decision-making around those. And so nonprofits are not known to have, you know, a lot of resources, and a lot of the money is, you know, fundraised. And so we had to be very resourceful and have to make hard decisions around where we're going to be allocating our money. So I believe that, you know, I can bring my expertise in budgets, strategic decision-making, but I also have experience within nonprofit operations in finance, HR, administration. So that's one. And the second skill I'd like to highlight is the fact that I've worked in the nonprofit sector, both on community-based organizations and political organizations. And so I know what it means to be an advocate for somebody, and how to work with, you know, politicians, community members, to be able to push policy changes and enact change. And so I believe that I can be an advocate for students, you know, both on a statewide level, a federal level, be able to work in, in community with, you know, decision-makers, and be able to bring back tangible solutions and tangible items back to the JJC community. So, yeah, my, my experience in nonprofit operations and my ability to be an advocate for students. Thank you.
Thank you for your response. We'll now move on to the second question. How will you, as a board member, work with the administration to ensure the college keeps meeting the needs of the students, employees, and community members? And for this question, we'll start with Kevin.
That is an important one that I've witnessed a little bit. As, as board members, I said this earlier, we can't just sit behind the board, go to the board meetings and sit behind the table. We have to get out there in the community, meaning the Joliet Junior College community and the community at large. We have to go to the activities, we have to talk to the administration, the professors, the, the students, the parents. We have to get out there and know what their needs are, know what their wants are. I've been at four or five activities in the last three or four weeks here on the campus, and some of the sports activities, some of their activities. and some of the sports activities, some of their activities. And you have to go out there and talk and and really, you can't just show up for the meeting and sit behind the board and make the decisions without knowing what's going on out there. And I think that's important for the board members, as I said earlier, to be cheerleaders and ambassadors for the college. And that means getting out there and talking to them and understanding what their needs are, what their wants are, knowing that they're not going to get all their needs and wants, but taking that back to the boardroom then and sharing that with the other trustees and talking about the decisions and how you can take that budget and allocate it and do what's best for, you know, you're working with two different things, you're working with the college that, you know, needs to pay its bills and they got to make sure they have enough money coming in through taxes and through tuition, but then also keeping it accessible and affordable for the students by keeping tuition down. And talking to those students and talking to those people is the key to that and getting out there from behind the table in the boardroom.
Thank you for your response. We now move on to Richard.
Interesting question. There's some fine lines, and I've been on both sides of this, where I've been a student and instructor, also administrator. And you, as administrator, you make the best guess at what you think the budget's going to be, and there's always things that come up that change the road. I was taking a welding course in January. Our exhaust fan went out. And you need exhaust fans for welding, it's toxic fumes in there. And for the 20 days I was left in the class, the exhaust fan had not been repaired. We got temporary exhaust systems in there that helped out, they don't do as good job as they want. I'm not sure what the status of that is right now, but sometimes the budget has to be modified. I think we've got a good staff here, I think we've got good administration, we've got some great students here. We need to make sure that we're providing the opportunities that mirror industry, mirror the careers that they're going to be going to, and make it where we're number one as far as our students leaving here. They need the great opportunities and instruction and guidance that we could provide them for a great career.
Thank you. Now, one moment to Alicia.
Sure. So one of the ways that I have continued serving Joliet Junior College, the needs of the community and the students, is by staying engaged, being an active member of the community. I'm also not just a public servant on the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees, but I'm also the first Latina Joliet Township Clerk. So I am very engaged in the community and I I get out and talk to the needs of the students. When I come to the board meetings, I'm very approachable, I've developed relationships. I've worked in higher ed for 15 years, which is why I have, I know a lot of people because I've I've been a counselor to a lot of education and nursing students and and they still live in the community, so I stay around in, you know, the same circles. Also, with the, Joliet Junior College is a huge economic driving force, we're one of the biggest employers in the area. But Joliet Junior College has resources that we, I think we can still have opportunities to grow with, we have our new business, it used to be called the Small Business Development Center, now it's been repurposed. And so I'm pushing the administration and the president to make sure that Joliet Junior College has the resources to really help small business owners like Ms. Harris, like myself, and people that want to, new entrepreneurs that want to, that don't know how to write a business plan. We have the resources to offer workshops to do this. We, in the past, we did get, we have had people from the public come and really call us out, especially our African-American contractors, and said, hey, you're not serving us, you're not meeting our needs. And, you know, I, at the time, we had a prior administration, I said, what can we do to better serve our African-American community? Because they want to start businesses, but if they don't know how to get registered with the state to be on the, you know, a minority certified, that there's a long process that goes along with that, but people don't know it. And not everybody's willing to jump out and show you how to do it. So if we have the resources, let's do more of these workshops, and we have. We've been doing more within the community, we are very, we've partnered with the with the Latino Economic Development Association, and I know we do a lot with the African-American Business Association with ABA. So, but somebody on the board has to continue to, you know, push the the administration and say, hey, we need to be present, there is this need. And if no one on the board is talking about it, it may not happen. So I can tell you definitely, I'm very vocal about the needs of the community, but we have to know what those are. And I I stay engaged in the community, as well as, like Mr. Collins said, coming out to the events on campus. We had the backpack giveaway here over the summer, I came out and participated, free haircuts were going on. And being a cheerleader for the college, letting the community know, hey, this is going on at the college, come on out and engage. Thank you.
Now we'll move on to Crystal.
So I think the best way to meet the students' needs is to bring the students to the table. I think, you know, you have to work from a student-centric mindset, and I'm here, you know, if if elected to be a board member, I'm here to serve you, the students. And so I'm not here to meet, you know, any of my personal agendas, I'm here to see the needs that you guys have and be able to push those, you know, changes at the administrative level. And so I want to make myself accessible to students and faculty as much as possible and continue, you know, like many others said, to be active and be engaged and be accessible to everyone so that people feel, you know, safe and welcomed and to express their opinions to me, to be able to talk to me about whatever issues that they're facing both at the college or in their personal lives. And then go back, you know, to the board meetings and on on that level to take what they said and be able to, you know, push policy and to be able to allocate resources so that they have the community of the support that they need constantly. So, yeah, I I believe that, you know, I want to just be engaged and accessible.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Diane.
As you listened earlier, I mentioned the organizations and the boards that I sit on, political, political boards, religious boards, business, and many others. And as a board member, we work together, we communicate, and we have to go outside of those boards to to also communicate, to get things done. The total collaboration, just like what we do here at the Joliet Junior College, it's very important that we communicate and act as liaisons between organizations so that we can get things done. And we have to do that in order to investigate, we have to investigate and make sure that what we're bringing forth are facts and something that will hold to to what we're trying to put through. And it's very, it's very important that we focus on the facts. And as I mentioned earlier, I enjoy the investigative part. So digging in and communicating, making sure that we have done our due diligence and making sure that we're making decisions that best meets the needs of the mission and the goals of the universe, of the college, and also of the students. So, and I, and I do, as everybody else has said here, support the development of the students here at JJC.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question. Some candidates have expressed specific ideas for how to attract potential students. Can you please tell us your ideas for growing programs and enrollment at JJC? I'm sorry. For this one, we are going to start with Richard.
Have to write it down or make sure I get clear. Every school that's higher education is trying to attract the very best students. I was part of that many years ago when I went to Northern. And I had an evening with our students that was on our dorm floor, and everybody bragged about how smart they were and what schools they went to and how rich their parents were, et cetera. And I went back to my room and I knew I had no business in that school or on that floor. But four years later, I got a piece of paper said it's a bachelor's degree, and a lot of those students were no longer around. We have an opportunity here to attract students because we offer a, offer a great bargain for what you're getting compared to four-year universities. We've got some excellent instructors, we've got some excellent programs here, we have some great career technical areas. Machine shop, they have a area down there that the instructor puts up job opportunities, 20, 25, $30 an hour jobs. And you go to those jobs and those businesses are paying for you to come back to Juco to gain your skills. An excellent auto program, you ever have your, you have your oil changed lately? It's what, $75, $100? You know, that's just the minor things. So we have great opportunities here. We also need to look at where we're at and where we need to go for the future. In providing that, a lot of the students in feeder schools may not know about this. They know what Joliet Junior College is, but they don't know the opportunities here. And those have to be marketed and brought forward so those students get, hey, hey, I like, I like to weld, or I like this, I want to be an engineer, I like nursing, or I like taking care of animals, you have a vet program here, how many kids know about that? You know, so there is a lot of opportunities here that could be expanded, and some of your best people for recruiting is your own students, because they're proud of our, you're proud of your school, and those are the needs, bring them back. If you get somebody to sign up, make them a recruiter, so.
Thank you very much. We will be moving on to Alicia.
Sure. So the question was, growing the programs at JJC?
Yes, for growing programs and enrollment.
And enrollment, okay. So one way that I I think I've been effective is trustees, we get invited to attend an annual conference, it's a national conference where we receive a lot of training on policy, on the budgets and legislation and laws, but there's also a lot of vendors that come out to these conferences. And I believe it was maybe two years ago, I ran into a vendor, because I I make the time to go to each, you know, booth and talk to them. And one of them, they're from Pace Bus, and they asked me if, you know, they had a discussion about, you know, we have this program, but we need students, we need to put students in the program, and we will pay for the students' tuition, once they finish the program, we'll hire them. And I thought, you know, that's, we have Pace in Joliet, so I brought the information back, I took their business cards, I gave it to our vice president of enrollment, our vice president, which is Dr. Yolanda Farmer. And now, guess what, it's happening. We have a partnership with Pace Bus and students sign up for the, I think it's a two-week course, Pace will pay for the tuition, so it's free for students that want to earn a CDL to be bus drivers, and then they will hire them right into their program. But again, going out to the conferences, to be there, talking to the vendors, seeing opportunities, how does this relate, is this a possibility for my community? And yes, it was. So that's one way we can do it, is building partnerships with other organizations like Pace Bus. The radio talked about it a couple, maybe a week or two ago on WJOL, and I immediately called Scott Slocum, I said, hey, because they were like, how did you hear about this? And, you know, the person said, how? And I thought, I brought that. And I I left the message, but I never got a call back from the radio station. But in either case, it's okay, you know, we don't need to get credit or anything, but as long as it's happening, right? So the other way that I think that, and I I've been saying this for eight years and we're making, we're we're moving the needle, but I still want to see it a little bit more accelerated, is with our GED students, our early school leavers, there are thousands and thousands, if we had every GED and adult learner enrolled here taking college-level classes, we definitely would be, again, bursting at the seams. So I think there's still more work that we can do to make sure that the GED graduates matriculate into college-level courses and at least towards a certificate or a two-year degree. But we are, I've also been pushing for accelerated courses. Sometimes students that are, you know, in their twenties, don't have time, are married, people, you know, returning adults, we, we're working, and now you work three shifts, there's different shift work with all the factories around here, and you have a family. So to make time to come to a campus for a 15-week semester, sometimes that's not doable. We need like six-week accelerated classes where we can get in, you know, learn, do our pro, our projects, move a little, at a little bit faster pace, I'm sorry, possibly through like a blended instruction. So, yeah, our GED and our early school leavers and our returning adults, I think those are opportunities that we can still work on.
Thank you very much. We'll be moving on to Crystal.
So I like to approach increasing enrollment in two, in two perspectives, so two demographics, the traditional student and the non-traditional student. So with the traditional student, I think JJC should continue to build strong relationships with the high schools and should play a vital role in a person's transition to, you know, post-secondary education or a decision towards a different pathway. So I think, you know, I really want to challenge JJC to map out all the options people have to build successful, stable careers for themselves, their families and their communities that could be attained by a college education or trade school or other forms of training education here, offered here at JJC. You know, just to ensure that people are making the best decisions for themselves and are supported by the institution the whole way. In regards to non-traditional students and the question about growing programs, I, to me, I look at them hand in hand. So with non-traditional students, there has to be more programs to support them and their ability to come back to school or to go to school for the first time and and stay there. So like, like the program that Alicia mentioned, you know, I, with with Pace Bus, you know, we need, we need to continue partnerships like that to eliminate any transportation barriers students might have. I also propose, you know, any barriers with housing insecurity or expanding campus childcare so that, you know, students from non-traditional backgrounds have the community support they need here so that, you know, we can keep them, you know, getting those numbers to increase enrollment. Yes.
Thank you. And then we will move on to Diane.
Would you please repeat the question?
Yeah, of course. Some candidates have expressed specific ideas for how to attract potential students. Can you please tell us your ideas for growing programs and enrollment at JJC?
Okay, thank you. Well, we know that in a community college, it's not only designed for the younger generation, it's also designed for the career individuals who are already in a career. So we have to take a look at all opportunities. And I agree with Alicia about attending a lot of the fairs and trying to find out what fits the needs of all of the students. I think that the, the, the fact that some individuals are not necessarily interested in a two, a two-year degree or or a degree at all, we have to focus on skills and trades, you know, maybe certificates of things of that nature so that we will still be able to attract individuals who will attend the college. I think the, working with other four-year universities and to make sure that we're focused on maybe dual credits so that when they do finish here, they can move on somewhere else. It's just something that will attract the students to want to come to JJC.
And then I'm gonna, I actually have a follow-up question that we prepared in case there was extra time. And that is going to be, what changes would you bring to Joliet Junior College? And that is for Diane.
Okay, my name is Diane.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Well, I I know that it's unfortunate, our graduation rates are somewhat lower than others. I kind of looked it up, and I'm sure there are reasons for that. But after I took a look, 14% was somewhat low in comparison to other areas. And I know we can't always compare ourselves, it's almost like everybody wants to compare Joliet Downtown to Naperville Downtown, and there's just two different variables there. But it would be my interest and concern to dig a little deeper to find out what, why our percentages are are very low in the surrounding areas and and maybe help to try to increase the graduation rates. And then maybe to determine also if, if, and, well, yeah, if we can maybe focus on some new programs. That's it.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you very much. And then we will be moving on to Kevin.
Yes, and can I, on the growing enrollment one, I didn't get a chance to answer, so I want to answer that one really quick. You know, growing enrollment and, and the programs, one of the things that I've been talking about over the last couple of months is the partnerships that Joliet Junior College has had with the trades and, you know, a lot of these specified programs. One of the great ones they have right now is with Lion Electric. They're a bus, electric bus company located right here in the area. And they're training, you know, their mechanics basically, and everything to go right into those jobs. And those partnerships, that, those are great things to build programs. And I, I mentioned earlier about, not just now, but for the future. And obviously, you know, electric vehicles are something that is getting a lot of talk, and those are jobs that will probably be here for eight years. We've partnered with those. And so, continue to partner with the, with the labor and the trades, and offering those programs where many times, and I believe Alicia said this, they'll pay for, for the college, for those students to come and work in their fields. There's such a great need, so those partnerships would grow some great programs. As far as enrollment, I, I do have a daughter who's a senior in high school, and for the last seven months, every day, six postcards in the mail from different universities, different colleges. She doesn't even look at them. For her, it was about in high school, the dual credit programs, and being able to get dual credits and the partnership. She did some stuff with Wilco, and she's taken a few courses here at Joliet Junior College. And I think, starting the dialogue with those students early about the opportunities that are with some of the high schools around here, and working with the high schools. I know we do, but against, in, in expanding the dual credits for high school classes to include courses here at Joliet Junior College, and then also, yes, making sure that they transfer to a four-year university, and that pathway is, is there for all those students can help increase with the retention, and also the addition for more students to the student body.
Thank you. We'll ask that same follow-up to Richard.
Okay. One of the things that bothered me, and I'm not sure it's still going on, but the zero courses, zero-nine-eight for math, zero-nine-one for English, which were non-transferable credits. At Wobotsey Community College, when I was in Aurora, we worked closely with them, and if they, students would take a placement test, and they weren't put in those courses, well, they had to pay full tuition and everything else. And that bothered me, because those students many times had gone, done very well in high school, and for some reason, they were putting in the lower-level courses. Curriculum alignment with the other universities. Students could come here, take their academics, maybe go to Lewis, University of St. Francis, Northern, various other schools, and work where they get their technical areas, their high specialty areas there, and their academics, and their basic fundamental courses here. And it'd be the best, because you're going to get the high technical education, but also the lower class that Joliet Junior College provides. Alignment with industry that was brought up before, we're already doing that. Dual credit courses at East Aurora, if you got an A or B in our auto program, junior and senior year, it took care of the first couple of courses, and we aligned our curriculum with what Wobotsey had. We did that with several courses at Wobotsey, and I'm sure that's happening with many of the courses around. Some of our high schools have robotics, they've got tremendous programs there that could, they go from the high school, right into Juco, and keep going on. Marketing, we have a marketing students here. They're the ones that should be devising and implementing the marketing to increase student enrollment here. Just a few of the ideas I've had. I've worked with, I was on three state committees, two national committees at East Aurora. You know, there's things going out, and I really like the idea of going to the conferences and finding out what the vendors are, because the vendors are the driving force on the direction of what tomorrow is going to bring. I was a cabinet-making teacher, East Lockport High School, had a zero budget. Back in the early eighties, we were having twenty thousand dollars with the sales of our high school woodshop class that funded our program. So, there's a lot of opportunities out there that we need to maybe think of where the box is, and then we'll know what's outside of the box. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, here from Alicia.
Sure. So, ideas for enrollment, somebody mentioned dual credit. I want to tell you, I'm a little bit ahead of the game on that. So, I think I mentioned that I'm also working as your Joliet Township clerk, and one of the responsibilities that townships have is to look after the seniors and also our youth. And, I had a discussion with our board and with our supervisor, and said, you know, Joliet Junior College's new president rolled out this new initiative. It's called the twelve-by-twelve-by-twelve, which means that high school students in all seven counties that are feeder schools to Joliet Junior College, they are now able to have received twelve college credits, twelve AP credits at advanced placement by the time they're in twelfth grade in high school, for only twelve dollars a credit hour. And I explained to the Joliet Township leadership team that, you know, we could supplement this to increase enrollment and to support the Joliet Township students, any school, even if, you know, you're homeschooled, well, no, that wouldn't qualify, because they'd have to be in the twelve-by-twelve-by-twelve. But anyhow, I said, you know, we should be able to supplement. So, Joliet Township awarded Joliet Junior College twelve thousand dollars, so that a student, once they complete that twelve-by-twelve-by-twelve in high school, and they're ready to make the transition into community college, their first class is on the township. So, a lot of students are nervous, am I gonna like it? Take your first class on us, even if you don't do FAFSA. Try it out, get a feel for it, get your feet wet, it's on us. So, that's one way that, that's an initiative that we already started at Joliet Township. Another change that I would like to see is, so you know what the numbers are, so seventy-seven percent of the Joliet Junior College student body is under twenty-five years old, and fifty-seven percent are women, okay? What we need to support our, our, our students is, we need to continue to offer childcare support, because many times, we don't have a babysitter to help us with our children. And if we offer more childcare at all of our campuses, especially out in like, in like Romeoville, we have a huge campus in Romeoville area, you know, that's one, another initiative. And then maybe offering, and I've, I've brought this up to prior administration, is we need to really encourage, bring in our young men with our sports. We have great athletics. Nobody even knows what we really offer, because we're not, we need to continue to engage the kids, to come, have them come in and see, trial for a sport. Maybe they could use that to pay, you know, have the township money pay for that first, you know, class and engage them in sports. But those are some initiatives that, you know, I've already started on, and I'm going to continue to keep driving those. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Crystal.
So, what changes would I bring to JJC? So, my campaign launched a college-for-all policy platform that is available on, you know, our social media pages and our website, which essentially outlines, you know, the importance of leading the movement for tuition-free college, prioritizing mental health and wellness of every student, eliminating transportation barriers and housing insecurity, and expanding campus childcare, and a lot more. So, there is so much that I would like to do, given the opportunity to serve on the Board of Trustees, to ensure that JJC is leading through an anti-pressive blend, and provides that infrastructure, you know, all students need, you know, to graduate college and ultimately succeed. So, lots of, lots of bold changes, but I would say that, you know, Governor Prisker was here not too long ago, and he was outlining a lot of similar things, echoing a lot of the same messages I'm saying. So, I don't think, you know, a lot of these changes I'm proposing are radical, I think they're actually obtainable. And, for me to be, you know, on the Board of Trustees, I'm certainly going to be an advocate for those changes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our next question. As a general observation, students are paying attention to the challenges the Board is facing. How will you be a trustworthy and respectful Board member? And we'll start with Richard.
I have been part of many different committees and, and boards, and you come up with the agendas, you look at what your visions are, what your basic needs are, and you come together as a team. You listen to people's concerns, you listen to the people that's bringing, you know, their concerns to your board. Some are legit, some, you know, have some merit, some don't. But, as a Board member, you have to take all that in, as far as what's best for our students. And that's why I really look at what's really best for our students, what's good for our staff. You know, how can we take these needs that are out there, and bring them in, and make a holy group to move forward? And, I'm not a hundred percent a team player all the time. If I have a problem, I'll bring it up. But there's also a professionalism that we are, we have to do, and we're role models for our students and staff, and we must always remember that. We could argue all we want behind closed doors, but when we're out in the public, we are representing our community and communities. And that's what we really need to do, is focus on what's best for our future and our students.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Alicia.
Sure. So, I think, I agree with what my colleague just mentioned. When I first was appointed on this board in 2015, I was bullied by another Board member. It was really bad. And, I thought about leaving, I thought, I don't need this, I'm not even getting paid, you know? But, the, the focus wasn't about me, it's about what I, the value I bring. And, I was kind of hoping that other, more seasoned Board members would step up, and nobody did, okay? I was told by this, by one person that I wasn't qualified to be on this board, and I thought, what does that mean? You know, the only qualifications we need is, we need to live in our district, be able to vote, and be eighteen years or older. And I thought, I don't even need a degree to sit on this board, but I have several. And so, just, you know, there was like no support, like you figure it out on your own, just deal with it. And, it got to the point where I finally did have to sit down with our chairman, and with our attorney, and say, look, something has to be done, so we need to speak up and know how to advocate for ourselves, because things got really heated in Board meetings. And really, it was embarrassing, like, just, I wouldn't want to come to a Board meeting if, if that's what I had to deal with. I, I don't blame people for not wanting to come to Board meetings if they're going to see a fiasco, you know? So, I just had to, and, and I think, sometimes, we give an impression that we're weak, because we're trying to be professional, and we're trying to, you know, not respond, not react. But, you know, I think being able to hold your composure, and then finally asking for people for help, I probably should have asked sooner, you know, for my chairman to please step in. And it's kind of a hard position to put the president of the college, he or she cannot step in, because we are their boss. You know, you can't tell him, hey, this, no, we're all adults, we need to behave like adults, and give each other that courtesy, and we can agree to disagree respectfully, because there's always going to be, you know, somebody that thinks they can intimidate others, so just maybe asking for help sooner. So, I think, you know, that's how we gain trust, is by maintaining, we can control ourselves, you know, exemplifying the self-control, self-respect, and just, you know, asking other Board members for, for support when you need it, before things get really heated and out of place. It doesn't have to be a bad space, it can actually be very productive, but just making sure that we're all, you know, respectful, that's all.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from Crystal.
So, in terms of building trust, I think, as a Board member, I would like to build trust, you know, with my relationships with my fellow Board members, but also the students, and be able to deliver, you know, transparent governing in all of my decision-making. So, I feel like, you know, having that student-centric mindset, bringing students' voices into the table will allow me to build trust with them, and in terms, you know, be able to echo that with my Board members. And I think in regards to, you know, being a respectful Board member, it's very similar to what has been said already, but I want to highlight something that was in, you know, my policy platform. I specifically highlight that the importance of protecting and supporting the most vulnerable students on campus. That includes, you know, LGBTQ plus students, immigrant refugee students, disabled students, and veterans. And so, I mentioned that, you know, I will be a fierce ally for all these, all these groups of people, and, you know, safeguard these communities against violent rhetoric or, you know, hateful actions. And so, I can't, I, I also have to practice those things on the Board, and be able to, you know, be a respectful and safe person on the Board, to ensure that we're governing effectively, and that we can have these, you know, tough conversations, but still be able to produce results. And so, yeah, I think I, I can provide that advocacy still, you know, for the students, but in a respectful way, to demonstrate how, you know, we can treat each other with a lot of trust and respect, and therefore, you know, we can demonstrate what, what's that like to protect and save, protect and support the most vulnerable students on campus.
Thank you. Now, we hear from Diane.
You mentioned that the students are paying attention, and, and they should be, just like the voters, and they should be paying attention as well, because we are elected, and we're elected to represent the bodies, the voters. It's very important that we focus on transparency, but we still have to be confidentially. Our behavior has to be ethical, and we also have to follow the Open Meetings Act. When we get on Boards and organizations such as a junior college, and like one that I sit on, the Joliet Public Library, there, there are many, many confidential bits of information, and we cannot discuss it, you know? So, in order to build trust, you have individuals, if you're discussing something that's confidential with someone outside of the Board, right there, you, you've lost trust, because the individuals that you're speaking with, then they would not value your, your, your position as a Board member. So, again, when we are elected to represent you, the, the way we can build a trust is to make sure that you know that we are operating accordingly, as again, I said, by the Open Meetings Act, and also by our ethical behavior and within the community. And, we want to make sure that individuals who have confided in us, trust, that they will continue to do so, because that's a means of helping move any agenda forward. If someone's holding back, then of course, if they don't trust, there could be some information that's needed, that we can help an agenda move forward. So, trust is very important. So, we're glad that you're watching, and we want you to keep watching.
Thank you. Now, we hear from Kevin.
You know, it all starts with communication, and we talked about it earlier, getting out from behind the Board, not just the Board meetings, and getting out into the community, the Joliet Junior College community with the students, not just showing up for photo ops with the Governor, but getting out to events where the students are at, and talk to them, where the staffs are at, going and seeing them, and being out in the community, and taking that information that you get from the students, from the community, bringing it back to the Board. And then with the Board, a, a lot of times, you, you spend time speaking with the ones that agree with you. They're already there on the point where you're at. Why aren't you speaking with the ones you don't agree with, and trying to find that common ground, where you can both meet in the middle and get things done? And that's what brings trust, and, and just being honest, and being forthright. And, but it all starts out on the front lines with the students and with the staff, and taking what they're giving you, bringing it back to the Board, sharing that information with the Board, and really working towards a common goal.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next question. So, mental health has become an important conversation on campus. How will you be supporting the mental health of the student body as a Board member? And for that one, we will be starting with Alicia Morales.
Sure. So, that is a discussion also that we've had even before COVID, and then the conversation increased during and after COVID. We've hired many mental health counselors to support our students on a day-to-day basis, because we identified that the situation only exacerbated after COVID. And so, we made sure that we were ahead of the game, we were having the conversation before COVID, to make sure that we had the funding in the budget, so that we could hire people, because these are things, I mean, I'm just so glad we started having the conversations before. So, post-COVID, we were there, we were already ready, and we're still working on it. Along with mental health, there's, you know, food insecurities, we were giving out free vouchers for students to eat for We were giving out free vouchers for students to eat for free if you're hungry. You know, if you're, you can't learn if you haven't eaten. And a lot of that is, you know, part of mental health. So we have the free food vouchers for students, you know, counseling. We're ahead of the game. So we're going to continue growing, you know, the, the projects that we already have ongoing now, but continuing what we started. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to Crystal.
So I will absolutely fight against any disinvestment around mental health to ensure all students have direct access to treatment and support and push JJC to advance mechanisms of community care and healing. Similar to what Alicia said, you know, student mental health and campus-wide healing and recovery post-COVID must absolutely be prioritized. And even before the pandemic, rising prevalence of depression, anxiety, eating disorders, and other concerns have been a growing issue on college campuses. So I believe when, as a board, we're making decisions around budgeting and where to allocate resources, prioritizing mental health and wellness absolutely needs to be, you know, top priority. Because, you know, our students, you know, the safety of them, their emotional well-being, it affects their entire education journey. So absolutely fight against any disinvestment and push for JJC to advance mechanisms of community care and healing to ensure that we have, or students have, all the support that they need. Whether that's through, you know, therapists, social workers, or other mental health experts, that they're accessible and free on campus so that students have direct access to, to those needs.
Thank you. And then we're going to move on to Diane.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that mental health has been neglected for quite some time. And just recently, due to the pandemic, we've taken a closer look at it. And it is something that needs to be dealt with. A lot of our crimes and other types of unwanted behavior has arisen as a result of mental health. And I think the more knowledgeable we become of this subject, the more helpful we can be. And of course, here at a junior college, the age group is very, very susceptible to, to mental health, along with others. But those are the ones that we can zoom in on this day and age and try to make sure that we're doing everything we can within our budget to make sure that we offer opportunities such as training and programs and whatever it is that, that we can put together for the, for the college. I think someone mentioned that we already started, or we have already taken my seat, that the college has already started working on something to that effect. And that's a good thing. I think maybe enhancing some of the health programs and some of the deeper subjects that maybe we haven't really touched on in a while. Like I say, it has been a neglected illness for quite some time. And, and we're just glad that it has come to the forefront. And I would support the programs that help the students here at Joliet Junior College within our budget.
Thank you very much. And then we're going to move on to Kevin.
You know, we went through the COVID pandemic for the last three years, a very real pandemic. But we've had a mental health pandemic in this country for decades. I think probably more than likely, most people in this room have had a family member or someone they know closely that has dealt with it, whether it has been somewhat public or kept it quiet, which is a travesty that people feel the need to keep it quiet because it is a disease. I personally and my family have dealt with it. I've spent almost 48 hours sitting in a hallway at a hospital emergency room because they didn't have a bed. And it should start here on the college because we have so many resources and so many tools that we should be able to start solving that, that problem, at least for our college students and everything. It would be a major, a major thing for me and a major point that I would work towards is making sure that the mental health tools are there. Also, you know, along the same lines, you know, college students are one of the, the top populations in the country for food deprivation, not having food, available food for them because they can't afford it. You know, the cost of college, then you go in there and, you know, the old eating ramen noodles in colleges. And, you know, it's a, it's a fact. I mean, I, kids do it because they can't afford it. And there should be those opportunities. I know there are, there have been some on Joliet Junior College campus. But we need to continue those. And mental health needs to be a major, major priority, not just for the college, but for this country. Because it's been a pandemic for many, many years that we haven't addressed and we need to.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to Richard.
This is a tough time for students. 50 years ago was a tough time. You're young adults. You've, you've kind of leaving the nest of your parents. It's a lot of intrinsic pressure on yourself because you're demanding that you do well. You're looking at, I have to do this in order to get my degree or do this or do this. And you're working towards what you think are your goals in your life. And, you know, your parents have high expectations for yourself. A lot of you, most of you are working. So you have a job on top of this. You have courses, you have demands for, for your professors. You have peer pressure, which is tremendous. It's harder now than it's probably ever been. And you have all this. You, when I was in college, one of the things I got into was a fraternity. It was called Alpha Phi Omega. It was a service fraternity. And we weren't there socializing. We were doing, you know, we took orphans trick and treating every week or worked with the VFW or the American Legion. Or we did service projects on a weekly basis. And that, that group of people were able to help guide me through the maze of getting through college. And that's really what it is. What course do you take? What professor do you take? How, how does this fit in with air? And, you know, somebody says, well, I'm a major in geology. You're having trouble in geology? I can help you out. Those things were peer items. It's a lot harder to have that in a commuter campus. Our psych students could help come up with some peer mentoring for these students. We do need professional help on that. But just to recognize issues is the toughest thing with students. And the more we do with that, the more programs we allow to operate and help our students through this maze, the better off they're going to be as adults. We, we'd have to experiment, look at this, come with a plan and move forward. We do need professional help because sometimes students just need a pat on the back or an arm lifted out to help them out. Or somebody say thank you or to help them out.
Thank you. So thank you very much for answering all my questions. We have a little bit of time left remaining for our event today. So at this time, we would like to provide you each three minutes for any closing remarks. And for this, we are going to start with Crystal Centeno.
Well, thank you guys so much for organizing this event. This was probably the most important thing to me for like the last month or so. Since I, I knew something like this was going to be organized, especially because, you know, the students organized this. So thank you for taking the time to, you know, plan everything, come up with your questions. They were all really meaningful and I'm glad to have engaged in this discussion. So I'm running for this position because I want everyone to have the opportunity and support they need to receive a high-quality education and thrive. I mentioned earlier that my campaign launched a College For All, a policy platform, where we're hoping to outline, you know, or we're hoping to dismantle some of the systemic and institutional barriers that make it hard or challenging for students to enroll in college, to stay in college, and to graduate. So I want to serve in the board, you know, to ensure that JJC continues to, you know, expand, to grow, and to, and to lead movements, especially as the first public community college. And to be a board member that leads through an anti-oppressive lens and provides that infrastructure that all students need to graduate college and succeed. And the last thing I'll point out is I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be here. I mentioned my story earlier today, you know, coming from, you know, immigrant grandparents and a first-generation mother. If it wasn't for community college, I probably wouldn't be, you know, pursuing a position like this. It gave me the confidence to be able to do something. And so I want to have, students have that same type of confidence to go out into the world and be able to, you know, achieve anything. So like I mentioned, you know, my College For All policy platform is available on all our social media pages and our Linktree website. Thank you again for being here. And I'd love to continue the conversation about how we can provide the infrastructure all students need to go to, to graduate college and succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Diane M. Harris.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the student union here for allowing us to come in and speak with you on this day. And I have to echo what Crystal said about the getting prepared for it. We, we have not had our due diligence. The city council and the mayor, if you've been paying attention, they've been taking over all the candidate forms. So, so I really appreciate this and I'm sure the panel here does too. But again, I am Diane M. Harris. And it's important to have resources such as a community college to help advance our young adults and their future goals. It's equally as important to have individuals like me who understands the importance of all these factors that were mentioned here today of a community college. And I will work hard to meet the needs of our students and the goals and missions of the college. I'll promote excellence in education and keep the goal and missions of both the students and the college a priority. So I humbly ask for your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Kevin Collins Hedermark.
Again, I want to say thank you to the students that put this together, everybody that's watching and listening to this in the future and that's here now. Accessibility, that's what's important, to make sure that all students have accessibility to the college. And what does that mean? We talked about, you know, being able to fill out the forms, knowing how to do the FASAD, knowing how to do all those difficult things that can be out there and having that pipeline to make college accessible to them. Affordable, last thing we want to do is raise tuition and raise taxes on our tax base out there. So we can do a lot of that by offset a lot of those costs by getting with the community and our business partners out there and working on donations and scholarships from them to help offset some of the equipment and the costs that are here at the college. Getting out from behind the boardroom, getting out in the community and being a cheerleader for this college and helping grow those relationships, helping grow the student body to the size it needs to be by getting more students involved. Those are the things that we can all do. And, and students out there, I want you to remember, you know, these are six-year terms. So the votes that you put most likely aren't really for you. They're for the students that are coming after you. So some of the issues that you had and that you brought up, you know, make sure it's a, it's a board member that's going to be there to talk to you about those so they can implement those changes for the students that come after you and you're shaping the future for the college. Kevin Collins Hedermark, I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Richard A. Davis.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. And I'm very blessed and impressed with the candidates that showed up tonight. Like I told you before, I grew up in central Illinois. My father got married in 1935 and he worked as a farm hand at a dollar a day. He made $360 a year. When I went to college, he made about $9,000 for the year in 1969. I've been blessed with having the opportunity to go on to college, have a teaching career. I've done many things in my life. I can, I can relate with the students. I've actually taught some night courses at Joliet Junior College years ago and forgotten about that. If you're 65 and older, you get free tuition at JJC. You have pay fees, but you still get free tuition. So there's some opportunities on that. I liked some of the things I heard tonight with the childcare, the expansion of sports. We used to have a football team at JJC. They were national champions. We have great athletes in our district. We have schools of one-state championships. We've had individuals. We have the opportunity to train our students to continue on to be the next leaders of our society. I think it's a great opportunity. I'm retired and of course, my wife says I'm working full-time. But, you know, I, I do have the time to commit to this. But I believe any one of these candidates here will represent the, the community very well. And thank you all. And my name's Rich Davis, if you really care.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Alicia Morales.
Thank you. I am what they call the incumbent. You know, I'm asking to be re-elected, to continue serving, being a public servant for another six-year term. And it is challenging when I am running a business and I work two jobs and still make the time. Sometimes I don't have the time, but I make the time because Joliet Junior College is a place of transformation. This is a palace of learning. It's a beautiful campus. We have a beautiful campus downtown Joliet, a wonderful culinary arts program downtown. We need to get more students in our seats. I think one, what I'd like to continue to do is continue to change the culture, to continue breaking down the systemic barriers. We've started doing that already and it's a process. And I wish we'd done more, you know, in my eight-year term. So hopefully, you know, we are going to continue to do big things in our, in, in the next six years. And moving forward, we just hired a brand-new president who's dynamic. And he's very committed to making sure that Joliet Junior College partners with all of our seven counties, all of our schools, all of our, every nook and cranny that we can get into. And, you know, one thing that I want to continue to see is I want to see data-driven results to show that our students are actually earning living wage jobs when they leave Joliet Junior College. I'm an alum, I know, and I'm an alum and I'm a former employee also. I don't think I even mentioned it, but I am also a licensed K-12 teacher. I just thought that opening up a business, because, you know, teacher salaries are, it's hard to live on a teacher salary, it really is. So that's why I decided to go and to start my own business. But I hope to earn your vote also on April the 4th. That's just a, you don't have to wait till then. Go this Saturday and Sunday because you can vote early. Bring every day, challenge yourself to call or text 10 people. Because voter turnout is so low and it's, it's terrible. Women had to fight for the right to vote. And now we don't even make that a priority. As Americans, we take so much for granted. And that's a privilege that we cannot take for granted. We need to get out and, and we just need to have our voice at the polls. So again, there's two seats open, so you will be able to select two people. We have a lot of great candidates here tonight. And I think we all shared our heart, our passion, and our experience. And, and thank you for being informed voters and coming out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to each of our panelists for their participation in today's event. We appreciate your time responding to our students' questions. To our District 525 community members, we hope this opportunity was beneficial to you as you determine what is important to you for the future of Joliet Junior College. On behalf of student government, the Blazer, and the student body, thank you and have a wonderful evening.